We are ready to start the public hearing for site plan review at Scenic Road, Plan Review for 26 Newton Street. And, um, one of the things that we talked about at the site walk was getting the Historical Commission's release letter with their conditions and comments on what was presented in the commission. Because none of us know, believe me, what it is that they looked at, saw, conditioned. So, we're sort of stuck on that part of it. And so, what I wanted to do is, I think there are two possibilities here. I mean, since we don't have any commentary from the Historical Commission on their review, we can't go forward on that, at least that's my feeling, until we get their comment because we don't know what they want to have happen here. So, we'll have to, it seems to me that we could do, we could go through the site plan review with everything but the house. And then, look at the house after we get the commission's comments. Or, we could just not, just continue the whole thing, not take up your time with the review tonight, and review it all together at a later date. Either way, it's a continued hearing. So, I throw it out to the planning board, is the people comfortable, which one?
Which, I thought you were offering them the choices.
Well, no, I'm offering the commission the choice. Which do we want to do? Do we want to go through a site plan review with everything but the house, or just defer everything until we get their commission's letter?
Can we go forward with these conditional two Historic Commissions review of the house?
No, because we don't know what it is that they're going to be saying, so, we can, what you're saying is essentially what I'm saying. We can't review the house until we get their comments, so we can review everything else.
Can we be heard? Sure. Thanks, and I appreciate the comments and share them. Our team is here tonight for a public hearing schedule. And what we would like to do is to present in court this week bylaws, our presentation. And when we get to the various aspects of the presentation, our finishes and details and things like that, we can certainly talk about the issue of the historic.
I'm not going to talk about the house tonight, I'm just not going to do it. I'll, I'll just continue the hearing, because I am not going to discuss it without getting the commission's comments first. I don't know what they're going to say, I don't know what, I don't, I actually don't know why, I don't know what the process has been that has not produced a release letter yet, so, that, since they had their hearing on this on the seventeenth of October, and this is now a month later, and, and, and there's something happening behind the scenes, I don't know what it is, and I don't really want to know. All I want is the letter from them, and I don't want to, I don't want to jump the gun and review things that we're then going to have to reverse if we see what they have to say. But I'm just not going to talk about it.
I think if it helps at all, the only two issues that are not fully resolved are the design of the bay window.
I'm not going to talk about it. I don't know what they're going to say, and I, and anything you tell me is hearsay, because I don't have anybody here from the commission to say anything different, so...
But the challenge that we have, Alice, that we started working with the Historic Commission several weeks ago, months ago, and we presented to them, so...
Is there anything about it that I'm saying that's not clear to you? I don't want to have the discussion until we hear from the commission what their conditions are.
That's, that's clear. You, I think, I hear you say that the board might be prepared to discuss the non-house aspect of the site plan.
Asking the board.
Question of clarification. One aspect which I think is not something Historic Commission would expect to have anything put on, is the foundation being underground. What's important to us is to, if possible, get approval for the foundation location.
I don't know if that breeds of the footprint. I don't even know that much.
They went on to...
They're historic, this is future.
No, but, no, they, they suspended demolition delay.
No, they lifted demolition.
All right, they lifted demolition delay, but, but under what conditions?
That we come to you and present to you what we present to you.
That's what you're saying to me, that's not what, we haven't heard anything yet from, at all, from the commission.
But why is he being held hostage?
Because that's the way it is. I don't, I'm not going to have a discussion of the house until we get the commission's comments. They lifted demolition delay for certain reasons. I don't know what those reasons are, and I don't, and I want them to tell me what, what they are. They're the ones that, that had the hearing with you.
Right, but the demolition delay scope of your...
All right, then, why don't we just put it off?
Well, you know, you're making it seem like there might be undertones.
I don't know.
Do you suspect that, I mean, I don't know how long it normally takes Historic to review a project.
Days.
Days normally, and now we're dealing with a month, so this would be under the heading of unusual circumstances.
Unusual circumstances.
So, you are a little, have fear and intimidation that there might be some things that you have no idea what's going on.
That's right.
And that if we do any kind of review now, it might all be moot.
I don't want to comment until I know what happened.
No, but let's talk back, back with, let's talk about the plantings. I mean, not that, not that that helps them at all, because obviously their deal is, they'd like to get the foundation in before it's cold.
But, yeah. It is unusual, but this has taken a long time.
Has there been any correspondence with Historic Commission?
The only correspondence that I received today was that they went to have comments, I've been copied, comments for the board as far as, and a copy of approval letter. I've been copied on emails that have gone to staff in the building department indicating the changes that they're looking for, such as the pitch of the roof, some of the architectural elements of the house. But it's been dealing with those elements, pitches, and some of the architectural details, not on, like, the footprint of the house, or whether or not there's an addition that needs to be added off the side.
Is there any question about the location of the house or the footprint done whatsoever?
We, you don't know, but we haven't heard anything from them. I mean, not a word.
Correct, the plan board is not. I've only been copied on emails to the building department responding to requests for information or clarification of what is being requested.
If I may, I, there is an email dated October twenty-fourth from Historic Commission that says, "These look good to me."
That doesn't mean, I'm looking for their, for their release letter, which is what they always issue under the commission's letterhead. And, and it will stipulate under what conditions they signed off, they lifted the demolition delay. Why is taking a month when it usually takes days? It's something I, it concerns me, I, I don't...
There's no dispute, because the house has been demolished, pursuant to a demolition permit issued a month ago. The house was removed a month ago.
Well, they may have a problem with that.
And the new house is destroyed.
For all I know.
Yes.
They may have a problem with, with the fact that the house came down, I don't know. I don't know.
But they actually lifted the demolition delay.
No, no, they never issued the release letter.
Right, but at the, at the public hearing, they publicly announced...
That's, that's what you said.
No, it's in the record, the minutes, I'll present the minutes immediately now.
But, there must have been conditions attached.
Only condition was that we present, that we, I'll read it to you, I don't want to call this, demolition delay. Al Adebah refused, sorry, did discussion, Al Adebah has recused.
I've never, I haven't...
I've had one single, one word discussion with anybody on the commission. Twenty-six Newton Street, present Valdis Smith, the architect who's here this evening, myself, Piregast, Western Historic Commission to lift the remaining three months of a six month delay, this was the eighth October of seventeenth period. A letter of support was sent from neighbor Allison Barlow, they cited the costs of repair, et cetera, et cetera. Western Historic Commission asked for changes, Western Historic Commission asked that the one-story ALG be located at the east side, and the existing bay window be replicated on the west wall. The siding will be white painted, red cedar clapboards, trim will be painted white basak. The Historic Commission asked that the angle of the gable and corner transition treatment be remeasured and resent, dentil detail should be revised, which replicated in original and talented spacing to the existing building. Round window will be replicated to the same size and details, roofing will be fiberglass shingles from Tanco heritage in Old Virginia slate gray or similar, windows will be clad wood with mulleons to match original plywood inch depth. If all of these criteria are met, and the revised plan is resubmitted, WHC agrees to lift the remainder of the six month delay based on willingness of Pimber to work with the listed Historic Commission, and because they have greatly improved the design. The motion was made, seconded, all in favor of delay lifted.
Let me ask you, I'll ask you point blank.
Yes, sir.
Are the drawings that we're looking at the same exact drawings that the commission signed off on?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Point blank. The yes is, they are the drawings that they requested we make changes to.
But have they...
The no is, the no is, out of the seven commission members present, all but one have sent back emails, which I have, that state, "These look good to me." I'll approve and write the letter.
What's the date of that email?
October twenty-fourth.
Wait, no, no, but...
There are presently two disputes, actually disputes, there are two issues that the Historic Commission asked us to redraw. One was the dimensions of bay window, which is six foot two inches by seven feet high, which we have redrawn to match the existing...
Subsequent value.
Subsequent value. And the second request was the roof pitch, the original roof pitch that we showed was seven twelve.
And it's also subsequent value.
Yes, they asked that we change that pitch.
So, we're still waiting for their signature or sign of approval?
Al requested at the site walks a release letter. We've made good faith efforts.
No, I said at the site walk, we're not going to have the, we're not going to talk about the building until we have the release letter. That was, that's the quote. The, the question I have is, well, when you're talking about, when Joe's talking about recent commentary concerning roof pitches and the like, it, it makes me just think that there must be more changes in the drawings that we're looking at than the ones that the commission feels they signed off on.
No, sir.
The drawings that you're looking at are what the commission saw, plus all the changes they requested.
The draw, the, the building you're going to construct is the one, he looked at you, I assume you're the architect?
Yeah, Valdis Smith.
It's the one, it's the exact one that you drew, and that they reviewed on the seventeenth of October.
Possible changes, yes.
Right, well, those are minor, like the bay window and so forth.
The changes are reflected in this document that we are prepared to be distributed.
Well, they haven't signed off on those changes.
Yes, they have, other than the bay window.
They have not, I don't have a letter from them that signs off on those changes. You know, you have emails back and forth apparently, but I don't have a letter from them saying, "We've looked at the, at the revised drawings, we signed off on them."
But that's not our responsibility to obtain that letter.
It's not ours either.
But it's, it was a public hearing, it was advertised, they knew when the hearing was.
For some reason, they're, they're not able to furnish the letter. There must be something that they're reviewing and, and, that, that...
Two items, the bay window detail and the roof pitch.
If it's anything other than that, they haven't told anyone what it is.
Well, they haven't told us either, and, but there's got to be something happening. So, I, I say again, I would, I would entertain talking about everything but the house until we get the release letter, or just putting everything off until we have a chance to look at everything all at once.
What happens, and can we ping the Historic Commission? We're waiting for this letter tomorrow, can we ping them? We have pinged them?
This morning, I asked for when we'd be able to have that, and the answer was that it would not be ready for tonight.
Not for tonight, but did they give us any kind of wedge?
No.
Can I ask a question? Is there any way that you can do it, approve something, you know, contend it on in like the next, certain shorter amount of time than, than whenever your next hearing is? The only reason why I ask is, because it's kind of strange for us too, because we have this strange thing about to happen, but it, there's this hole in the ground, and then if it gets pushed off, and then it freezes, then we're stuck kind of with this half project too for the next, and, so, I mean, and I know you want it to be right, but at the same time, I don't know, I'm just wondering if there's a way...
They made a place for staff to live in March when it was about reopened, it's closed now for Winton.
And when I was a chance, you try as hard as you can to, to resolve whatever it is that's bothering the commission. If there is anything bothering, there's a reason, there's got to be a reason, they, they religiously have a...
John Field met with them on Friday, and the two issues in John Field's email are...
I want to hear about John Field's email, I want to see the letter from the commission saying, "This, we're satisfied that the drawings reflect what we anticipated, and we, and we agree with what we have, and then we can put that in our decision, and that's the end of it." I don't want to go off and assume things, or think of, think that they might have said something, and then find out later that they didn't, and have to turn around and change it. It's a one-page letter.
How do you want us to go above getting that? We've tried, we don't know how to do it. We've asked the town planner to assist us, he's been unsuccessful. We've asked the building inspector to assist us, he's been unsuccessful.
Joe, let's you and I sit down with Alicia, and see if we can get a, you know, figure out, let's listen to what the problem is, and figure out how we can get it resolved. That's the only thing I can think of. It's the best I can do.
We will do whatever...
And believe me, that's, that's something I shouldn't be doing, because it's stepping on their territory.
We will do whatever they would like for finishes and details, we have no problem meeting their requests. I'm happy for you. I'm going to tell you to find a phone, just have a, you know, one consultation, so, it's just for clarification. What are you going to say?
I, I would be inclined to just do review, like, the landscape, the lighting, and things like that, so that, so that if and when, since we don't really have to review the house per se, do we, since we're not going to review it now, and since you're going to be happy no matter...
Basically, what we're going to be doing is incorporating the commission's comments into our decisions.
So, that, because, like, they've got, probably about two weeks, got to get this...
No, you can put a foundation in, in December, we can talk about that.
At a substantial premium cost, though, we've already given them thirty thousand dollars, you know, and I don't know why they're...
But it would be nice, the point is, it would be nice to have it go, that when this comes through, after you guys step on people's toes, and, and put yourself out there to try and get this resolved, it would be like, okay, cut, put it in, you're set, so I, I do think that we owe it to them.
All right, so, I think we can, I think we can, so, okay. Okay, so, that's the decision, we'll review everything but the house. Joe, I'll see if you guys get to go home and leave.
Just something in the commission.
Given that the minutes don't reflect any concern about the location, is there any chance that you would approve the foundation?
No.
Understanding that what's above it has got to...
Did we just, we just had a poll, and we said we review everything but the house.
But the house, and then according to...
And we'll consider the foundation to be conceptual.
With your permission, I'd like to proceed with our presentation. My introduction does reference the house and the commission, I'd like to, I'll try and extract those items that aren't applicable.
Insert a bleep.
Yes.
I need to drop those, the house is worn, please.
Some sort of instructions from the judge to the jury or something.
Thanks. Okay, we're, we're here this evening seeking site plan approval of a replacement building for twenty-six Newton Street. This is the last building element of Pimber's capital approval program to which this board has seen us, I think, a total of six times in the last three months or so. Pimber acquired twenty-six Newton Street in nineteen fifty-nine. At that time, the property was approved by a ramshackle residential building comprised of a small main structure with two additions. We actually believe that building was constructed by the caretakers who used to work at Pimber, this foundation was a rubble foundation of stone. Since then, we have used the former building at twenty-six Newton Street to provide housing for our caretaker and for cooking students who work in our kitchen and dining room during the golfing season. Over the years, the building suffered from rod, termite infestation, road damage, foundation collapse, structural settling, and water infiltration and other issues. The Western Building Inspector required in August this year that we reinforce under emergency shoring plan the foundation and portions of the structure. The building had low ceiling heights, well below current building code limits. Some of the ceilings on the second floor were barely six feet. The building also contained obsolete utility systems, no insulation, leaking windows and doors, and a multitude of other ills. After several engineering studies, Pimber concluded that there was no cost-effective way to upgrade and modernize the building to current standards, and that further patchwork repairs would not be effective in cost wise. We decided to replace the former building with a similar science building, one that turned out to be less in cost after we analyzed all of the costs for restoration. We filed our initial application for site plan review on September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. In response to questions raised from the town planner, Joe Layton, we filed supplemental materials on October seventh, two thousand thirteen, the same day we received the request for supplemental materials. Meanwhile, the Western Historical Commission had decided that the former building should be preserved, if possible, and had imposed a demolition delay, which became effective on July twenty-fourth.
Is this all big bleep, this particular section?
I'm trying to, thank you.
Why, I mean, we, didn't we just go through all this?
Okay. On October seventeen, we presented plans to the Historical Commission. We discussed the building's design at length with the Historical Commission, including finished materials, fenestration, paint, shingle colors, and a myrad of other issues. Subsequent to the Historical Commission's unanimous vote to lift demolition delay, two additional questions have arisen, deep and deep. Because this is new construction, the Western Historical Commission has no formal role approving the building's design. That is left to the planning board through the site plan approval process. Nonetheless, we recognize that the planning board looks to the Historical Commission for guidance when an older building is being replaced. Neither of the two issues awaiting a response from the Historical Commission, the bay window details and the roof pitch, impact the location of the replacement building, or details of proposed landscaping and drainage. Meanwhile, Pimber is facing the impending arrival of winter. After the ground freezes, we will be facing significant premium costs to excavate four and four, a concrete foundation, and accompanying field work. Under the circumstances, we understand the planning board, if the planning board is not able to approve an entire project, that you consider granting approval to us to proceed with the site work, which would include utilities and excavation. Now, I would like to present Pimber's design team, who will review the project in greater detail. Here, the senior is Valdis Smith, the project architect, Carrier Landy, the president of Milbrook Homes, our builder. This is a modular building that is due...
We're not going to talk about this.
Sorry. Eric Joseph from Paul Finger Associates, I'm being interrupted. Landscaping. Charles Lorraine from Dane Torby, and Rob Gemma and Joey Fuenteska for Metro West Engineering.
One second.
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
So, with that said, I will have left Joey Fuenteska.
Fuenteska.
Fuenteska, sorry. Only been sixteen years.
I don't know if the board wants me to start with the neighborhood inventory plan, or if you want me to just skip into the setup.
I drew it, so...
Yeah, okay, sure. I'll just hand those, I can just fill up my seventeen six. I'll start off with our site, twenty-six Newton Street, New Street, a clock behind the route, just kind of control the site. Locust is on the north side of Newton, Newton Street across from Ware Street, New Street. The previous house that's been raised was a four-bedroom, had an RGFA of about twenty-four hundred square feet. That's twenty-six Newton, twenty-two Newtons, the used release letter, has a five-bedroom dwelling, RGFA of about forty-five hundred square feet. Nineteen Newton Streets, four bedrooms dwelling, approximately forty-one hundred, forty-two hundred square feet RGFA. Eleven Newton Street is a four-bedroom with an RGFA of approximately forty-three hundred square feet, which is different than what plane we showed, this garage has been added. Twenty-seven Newton Street is a four-bedroom with an RGFA of approximately twenty-six hundred square feet. Before I switch to the actual site plan, just part on, on some of the Robert mentioned previously, is the original submission showed a footprint location here, and through the Historical Commission comments, we've since flipped or sort of mirrored that foundation footprint. So, this was the original submission, and this is what we're presenting tonight, again, the foundation just there. So, the one-story portion of the house on the right side of the floor. So, this is the proposed site plan. The existing dwelling, I'll kind of outline with my finger, is located here, was located there. It was approximately thirty, thirty-nine feet from Newton Street, so it was well within the zoning setback, I mean, it was about ninety-eight feet to the esterly property line. The ridge was about twenty-five feet from grade, and along with the dwelling, there was also a large patio off to the east side of the dwelling, which accounted for approximately five hundred square feet of impervious. The total site between the house and the patio, the building as a whole, had a total area of twenty-five hundred thirty-five square, total impervious area. For the most part, the site's wooded along the southeastern portion. It's fairly open, this is all sort of open lawn area into here, and then a lot of this was, was plantings that was proposed and installed during the maintenance building project in two thousand five, two thousand six. So, it's sort of a natural screen here, and then, these were, are, you know, we're all in the field now, but were, were part of that submission. This easterly portion of the site is within the two-hundred-foot riverfront, the stream is off-site, so we've got a small portion within the riverfront area. We're staying completely outside of the site and grading any site work within that, the limit works basically following that line. So, again, this is the new dwelling footprint, so will be front porch stairs leading into it, as well as a walkway on the backside of it. The driveway remains, the parking area behind to access the storage building and the main tweeting facility, cart cream facility remains. A, a small portion of the pavement does get removed here, so along with the removal of that pavement, large patio, there is a net reduction in impervious area of about three hundred sixty square feet. So, we didn't necessarily provide any drainage, but we do provide a roof infiltration system for the dwelling, located in front yard, which we had soil testing to confirm that the soil was acceptable. The new dwelling is approximately sixty, sixty-eight point eight feet from Newton, so it's pushed back, it's outside, and now conformed with the zoning setbacks. It is seventy-seven point eight to the esterly property line. The average existing grade plane around the dwelling is elevation one forty-two point four six, and the ridge is at elevation one seventy-five point seven one, which is approximately thirty, thirty-two feet from, from grade. So, it's an overall height of thirty-one point two feet from the top of the bridge. The max allowable is one seventy-seven point four, so we're a little less than two feet below the max. Some improvements, there's an existing cesspool that's failing on site, we've now had an approval from, from DUP to tie the system into the maintenance or sewage treatment facility located on site, so we now have that connection to direct call to the site. And again, really minimal grading associated with this, just a little grading on, on the easterly side of the dwelling, just to really get positive drainage away from, away from the foundation, but for the most part, just doing a lot of work. Again, all the work is outside the riverfront area, and the red sort of indicates a little of work in the area for the site, so sort of compact. Basically, it, sort of the site, so I can turn it over to, I'll, say, Eric Joseph to kind of review the last bit. to kind of review the last thing.
Yeah, I was just going to do this.
Yeah, do that.
Put a big yellow smiley face on it. Sad smiley face. So, what we're looking at doing is actually putting in about ten, eleven large green trees on here. We've actually coordinated with all of, there's actually kind of an area here to coordinate, you know, from viewpoint looking in, we're looking at combinations on some ten to twelve and some twelve to fourteen, white spruces and light pears, and using one of those because that's actually what's previously planted. So, we wanted to keep it consistent to supplement this border of this area here. We also added some additional, again, white spruces in this area here to help with the views in this area here. And then, part of the original landscaping plan that was actually submitted, talking with Kimberly, you know, her concerns, actually, even though it's quite exposed, it was quite exposed to Newton Street, can we actually plant some additional techniques in here to actually help screen some of that? And so, we have two spruces over in this area here, over here, twelve to fourteen, and then we also have a blue spruce in this area here, and we also have additional weathered in for maximums to help supplement this. And then, one of the things also that Robert did was that there was a pear tree that was here that actually we transplanted, it's about, I think we looked at it somewhere in the neighborhood, six-inch caliber. Actually, we transplanted that, and we actually put that also in the middle here. And we also then, working with Allison, to further supplement some of the screen, we actually added some Russian in for maximums, which actually aren't on the plan, but we wanted to go one step further, walk into Allison, make sure she was happy with the views. Have a number of foundation plantings, obviously, to help secure some of the, you know, to reduce the height on that, and then, we also, in terms of lighting itself, we're only actually going with two fixtures. The previous house actually had, actually, oops, I'm sorry.
Why?
Okay. Okay. The previous fixture actually had, house actually had four fixtures, including a floodlight. It was somewhere around seventy-eight hundred, eight thousand lumens. We're actually looking at just two fixtures at thirty-seven Newtons, so. And then, you actually took a photo. Sorry. But you can see, we have spruce trees here, we have blue spruce over here, and this is a little transplant of pears. Again, just to keep it consistent with the winter, that's why it's without leaves, but with black, if there were to be a house up here in the backyard, whether it's green.
There will be a house up here, just be in accordance with whatever the commission thinks is right.
Better, better. But that includes the landscaping and lighting portion, and obviously, that question will be answered.
They commented when we were on the site plan, I mean, I was enjoying chatting around there and looking, and people up to that, how, we might be able to see the composed smiley face when it is there, but I like the idea that you can still see it that we're not going to do the close-up wall.
Right.
And yet, it's just enough sort of to.
Right, it's enough to soften.
Yeah, to balance it and soften it a little bit. I know Al was a little concerned about this, that there was a grove of trees, remember the tall, there was a hemlock that didn't have any rope on it at all till it was happened. Isn't that?
That is true.
Yes.
It's fighting with another tree.
It's getting along really well, like we.
We don't have any cut sheets on the light fixtures.
Actually, it's on the plan itself, and the light fixture is, you know, it is nice type of plan. It's actually.
It's enough on here.
It is.
What paint is that box?
And I know Kim likes the plant, too.
Yes, Kim was very supportive.
And I'm nice to Mrs. Barlow. I'm not sure if she deserves it. Allison's an old friend, I can joke. I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
Okay. Drainage?
Can I ask a question before we move away from plants? Just, or should I wait till all of you have done?
No, it's fine, go ahead.
I just wanted everyone to know that they've been great with working with me, and they agreed, I don't know if it's on a plan, some word or needs to get noted on a plan, that if there is a particular, once it's in, if there's a, you know, that one spot that just glaringly sticks out, they said they would move a tree or put something in, and so that's been really helpful.
Can you identify what spot that was on the plan?
Well, we can't, because the house isn't there, and so, we, when I.
So, you're talking sort of the universal.
Yeah, that's why, because they said, okay, well, we can put some trees in now, ahead of time, so that was great, while all this construction's going on, and plus, they have a good chance to get a foothold, and, you know, it's a good time to put in trees, so they did that. And I was a little concerned at the time, because the house isn't there yet, so you can't know where is the best spot to put a tree. And Mr. Schlegel was very kind to say that, once the house is in, if there's one more or something, it has to go somewhere, then that was.
So, there would be a possible additional.
Yeah, or a movement exactly on that plan.
Correct.
Based on, and now that I know, too, that the light fixtures, there used to be one or two horrible light fixtures that sometimes got left on, that, you know, could clearly not night sky compliant, they were just right, you know, and that's all gone anyway, so we're not even worried about the lighting, it's much better now.
I know, everyone knows who you are, but could you just sort of say.
Oh, sorry, Allison Barlow, twenty-two Newton Street.
Right.
Yep, sorry.
And your town affiliation?
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I have to recuse myself if you come upstairs, for the conservation commission, too.
Thank you.
Rob?
Drainage? Joey actually touched on the drainage.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the site has a reduction of impervious area of three-hundred-and-sixty square feet, so it actually will have less runoff, over the hours, still not doing anything, but we are adding roof drains, drywall infiltration systems, so we'll have quite a bit less runoff post the hour than if it's a three-hour. So, it's as simple as a guess.
Dave, I'm assuming that you're fine with everything, all the site engineering?
Yeah. Yeah. Even much of them off. Never gets filled. But it's fine. There's really no site engineering. Oddly enough, too, they didn't even have a subject.
Right.
Yeah, but I already did that.
Yeah, no, I know.
Tied in with the unexisting house, so ready to go.
Right.
Of course, the wastewater treatment facility and services.
The whole thing, yeah, we talked about that on the site. All right, so.
There's nothing else we can do?
The only thing outstanding is the, is the condition of the letter.
I guess, Al, if I may, we just ask if there's some, I know you volunteered, thank you very much, if there's some way that we could try and schedule something as often as possible, I mean, not next Tuesday night, would it be possible to do a tri vote?
No. But.
Can we vote now with condition or not?
Well, I don't, I don't see how.
I mean, you can vote subject to the Historic Commission approval.
I don't know. I was going to say, this whole thing landed in hot water because of this conditional statement in what they said, and it seems like we're doubling it if we say, again, based on the conditional thing, I think what Al's looking for there is more certainty. And having that, having that letter is obviously certainty.
But in thirty days, they issue the demolition delay left, the house has been removed in its entirety, there's nothing there, it's a vacant land.
Right.
And we're happy to do whatever they want.
If we vote on a conditional, we don't issue, you know, a plan, or, you know, we don't finalize it until that gets conditioned.
Right.
Those conditions match.
Sure, and we have to hold probable evidence.
So, that just helps them not have to, like, do it again.
Exactly.
Whenever, you know, two weeks from now, or whatever it is, when we're having our next meeting.
Well, I don't know, because we, it's not that, I don't know how, what the commission's going to say or want to see, because they may want to see more material, I just don't know.
And then, they'll have to provide the commission one more material. We, our decision will be dependent, will be conditioned to you guys making the historic commission all smile.
Agreed.
I mean, and so, that gets, that gets them out of our time.
You realize what you're doing is, you're proposing that we vote on site plan review without a house design. Have we ever done that before?
With a house, with a house designed, you know, conditioned by the.
What is it?
Well, we could look to see what they ask.
No, I don't want to go there, because the commission is the first place that you sign off, and then we look at.
The commission has their site.
I'm just saying.
When the commission gets their sign off, are we going to change the commission?
I don't know what the commission's going to ask for.
But would we ever change the commission?
No, I don't think we'd overrule them, but I don't know what they're going to ask.
So, I'm just talking about saying, well, that's their problem, not ours.
But we're, you're perpomising issuing a site plan decision without a, without a principal structure.
It doesn't get issued, it doesn't get issued until that part gets resolved.
Well, wait a minute, in the past, we've gotten together when things have been missing, and.
But not the principal structure.
But not your principal, no, but I mean, so when this comes in, is it possible it will come in sometime in this week?
I don't know.
Possible, possible, may not come in for a year, maybe never.
Wait, wait, wait.
But it's possible that it might come in, and that we have actually convened in mourning, have we, like, upstairs and voted? Because we can, can we close our public hearing, or no, we can't?
I don't think we can.
Yeah.
The only question is whether we can, whether we can authorize, one of the requests that Bob made in his speech was, and it was a well-written speech, and well-read.
With the beats.
Was to, timely, was to request that we sign off on certain particular things that would at least enable them to go forward, such as installing the site utilities. And, but my question is, could we issue, could we agree to that, at least that level of work for them, so that we're not stopping them from doing everything by agreeing to the site utilities and, you know, at least get help of get going, so they're not.
So, you think that when, when.
Or the landscaping.
Right, right, but, well, then, you're taking, you're making a big assumption, too, that if someone comes in and says, okay, this is cool, and we're not going to make them regionally shaping totally, or we don't want the place, you know, moved fifteen feet forward on the, on the lot, we don't want it.
If they do, then obviously, if they come back, of course.
How about a delegation, Al? A delegation of authority, where the planning board delegates the design review of the house to the Historic Commission? Because we agree.
I think we already did.
They already have that, Paul.
Not legally. No, I don't, we can't issue a decision that says somebody else gets the authority to sign off on the principal structure on the lot, you know, but that's, that's a very strange scenario, but.
Yeah, basically, what they're, what they're basically asking is for us to draft a decision that basically allows for a construction of utilities, a foundation, and the only way we can basically.
A foundation, I can't, we can't.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just, I'm sort of summarizing the issue, saying, the only way you can do that is by saying, prior to, if this was stick-built, framing, following the foundation, they need basically a review and sign off.
But they don't need a building permit to install utilities and landscaping.
No.
Just the foundation.
No.
Yeah, so we could authorize the work to go forward on everything that didn't require a building permit, landscaping, utilities.
Are you going to do landscaping now?
Well, they can't really put in plants around the foundation right now.
They can't put in plants around where the beat is going to be, and then put the beat in without permission.
But those are all, you know, critical ones.
Most of them are along the back, in the front, they don't really impact the house, the house itself.
How about, if you can't, I realize you can't delegate.
I'm just trying to help, maybe, maybe there's no way to do it.
No, I was thinking, Al, what if you were to delegate the design review of the house to the Historic Commission, such that, no?
So, I don't see how we'd do that, I mean, that's, that's practical matter, this is site plan review that we are issuing, so I don't think we can say that we have a surrogate that we delegate authority to. I think we have to, the best thing is to bring in their comments and incorporate them into our decision somehow, that's, that's the best way, I'm just trying to see if we, if that, I'm trying to think, if there's a way that we don't hang you up on every.
Could we present the house subject to, in other words, hold on, subject to the Historic Commission's comments? So, in other words, if they have no comments, then we don't have to come back with an architect and designer.
No, no, because I don't know what their problem is, maybe, maybe there's something that's giving them a problem.
So, help me God, striking dead, Al, there are two issues, a bay window, and I have it in writing, okay? A, oh, and an officer of the court, there are two issues. One is a bay window detailing, and the second issue is the ridge height.
If that was the case, then we would have gotten a letter by then.
So, help me God, those are the two issues.
No, then, then there's no, I guess there's no way that we can, we can.
Yeah, and the only thing, the only thing is basically saying, you know, we continue with, like, some warning, we're at our sidewalk, Monday morning, to give, to get an idea, are we going to get something, and then just decide what date we go to in the future? You know, whether it's a special, special meeting, that's the only sort of immediate step Alicia, Alicia has.
Yeah, I don't see any, we don't have to.
I mean, does it make the.
It has to be another, it has to be.
And I'm sorry, but the agenda on the ninth is full, because we continued so many items from last week, our last week.
Well, we've given up all of them, we meet a couple times.
Well, why don't we, Christmas Eve?
My husband was so shocked. We haven't been a meeting in a while.
What about Thanksgiving? We could meet.
You're very funny.
If, once we have.
Do this in a morning meeting? We're talking about a morning.
Yeah, now, once we have a decision from Historic Commission, then we can schedule another meeting.
No, we have to schedule.
We have to do a date certain, that's why I was saying.
But we don't know when we're going to get the decision.
No, I mean.
No, we can always.
Al has closed.
Then let's schedule something for one morning next week?
I've already emailed, I've already.
Yeah, not Thursday.
What's wrong with Thursday?
All right. Really want to do Thursday, sure.
We actually can't have a hearing on the holiday.
Why not?
Would you, Al, accept our representation and an officer of the court's representation who was at the hearing, that those are the only two issues?
No, I want to get that letter, you know, I'm surprised, I've never seen it happen that a building was actually demolished in advance of a commission's letter lifting the delay.
I have a letter from her that lists the delay.
All right.
In an email, in a swing.
It's an email, one-hand swing.
Two-hand swing.
Yeah, well.
From Marissa Morris, demolition delay in twenty sixteen.
I'm talking about, it under the letterhand, signed by Marissa.
It's not on Western Historical Commission.
No, I know, I've never, I've never seen a case like that, so.
So, Alicia's already replied back to me, saying she's available Thursday or Friday. We can probably nail some meeting down the end of this week, and if we just set, set a date for some, for our site work on Monday, then if we get it, we can decide, do we do something another day, or is it basically kicking things off in the morning?
Let's do this. If we, what if we, if we had that meeting on Fri- Friday, that's three days from now, and invited Marissa and Alicia to come to that meeting, so that we can understand what, what's going on with the commission.
Like, you mean a Friday morning?
Friday morning meeting. Well, we could do that.
Tell them to bring some stationery, interesting.
Yeah, I mean, we can get, we can get the posting of the meeting in before eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
I don't think it's frivolous.
No donuts, I don't think it's frivolous either, I think it's a really, I think that it's very important that, that, yeah, that they, if there's an issue, then let this, then they should put it in writing and get it, and put it out there. If there's not an issue, and it's an approval, they should put it in writing and get it done. To hold things up unnecessarily, I think is not cool at all. I think it's really bad.
I don't think they're holding things up unnecessarily, because this is, this is unique in my experience.
Well, we, right, so it's not usual, what's going on?
But it's not, I think it's something to laugh about, is my.
We agreed to replicate the house, so this is, the front elevation is all they care about, because the back faces the maintenance building, we can't see it. So, it gets a very simple elevation, either it replicates or it doesn't, it's very, very simple.
What we're suggesting is a meeting on Friday with the, with the two commission co-chairmen, and we'll, and we'll work it out. What more do you want?
When do we?
No, I think that's what we're talking about, Al, you're talking about a planning board meeting Friday morning.
As well, after that meeting?
Well, at a joint.
Joint?
Yeah.
But with a two-chairman, co-chair. Could I ask, is it possible to do Thursday morning, Monday?
No, we can't make any posts, soon as we could actually do it is Friday morning.
We've got to post it. And it's you guys, because we're both available back.
Oh, God.
I have, I literally have seventy-four more than I can.
It's on you guys' shoulders.
Okay, great. That's never happened before.
Could we, could we at least share with them of the house, the secret house? Could we at least share with them of the house, the secret house, before that? So if there's an exception or objection, it's, you know, we can deal with it in advance.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
You mean, you want, you want these plans to be submitted to the store?
Correct. Could we, what would we submit it to you?
Prevent that? No.
No, it's fine.
Is there anything you need from us for Friday, and we do the facilitator help?
No, I, I just want to get the story. What is the story? There must be something there.
Again, the story is ridge height and bay window.
Okay, I don't know, it sounds possible, possible. All right.
So seven AM Friday, or eight AM Friday?
Six.
What?
Do it at six AM.
Can't make the posting.
Oh, God, I'm joking.
Probably, but still, I'm just going to.
First watch, like, the apartment.
So, I only need this another meeting.
Thank you for, thank you, thank you guys, all right.
This is you?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I already know.
Charles with the jacket.
That's not what I'm getting at.
Okay, what is, I wouldn't look at myself.
So you guys are going to, you're, you're going to need on Friday morning?
Yeah.